Guys, we're going to call this meeting to order at five o'clock. Would please join me in the budget, ladies and gentlemen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm on the agenda, it's a public comment, do you have anyone signed up for public comment?
We have one question, Mary Urbanette.
Alright, she will stand over here, make sure you.
It's that's cool, I'll be timing.
Okay, Laura will have a timer for you for the three minutes, and just, you have the microphone over here, so eventually you'll.
My husband helped me time also, but I really practiced my three minutes. My name is Lindy Robinette, I'm a very happy member of the library and have been so for ten years. But when the announcement came to stop Value Line on January fourteenth, my heart stopped. And I'd just like to take the three minutes and explain to you today why this value line is so very important for people in our county. Value Line was developed by Warren Buffett, a famous man, an investor and businessman. And he's taught us through many methods, the best way to evaluate stocks from purchasing them is a cash flow statement. And where's the treasurer? I don't see her. Cash flow statement is used to tell me, as a stock purchaser, exactly when to buy and when to sell. Beauty of that is, when I buy at the right time, then I sell at the right time, I make money in a 401K system. I declare profits, I pay money to taxes to the state, the state gives taxes to the library. So, this is why I'm here to defend Value Line. You can gain more tax money by keeping it. There were some statistics on your website, I get onto your website three or four times a week because I do use Value Line to purchase and sell stocks for my family. I had fun with some of the numbers that are on your website, for example, Value Line has used six thousand stocks. And if I pay out, they require eight hundred dollars next year so that I can buy my own digital, that's a big expense to me. But the fund ratio on that is, if the six thousand stocks cost me eight hundred dollars, it costs me seven dollars fifty cents per stock evaluation. Very important and valuable to me. Morning Star, Morning Star is also on your website. They do fourteen thousand five hundred stocks and it costs me personally thirty-six dollars. So by those two numbers, and that means Morning Stock is spending two cents to give me information about stocks, and it's completely not valuable. And I'm here to talk about that a little bit. I'm also very interested in your.
You have one minute left.
Thank you. I'm also interested in your PPLT twenty twenty-four budget. I'm looking at pages ten, four, and three, and I'm noticing that quite a bit of revenue is pulled from you by the state. A grant and also something from governmental funding. I'm concerned about that because that affects me and my value line. And I would please ask you if I have the name of the state person who publishes that data, gives it to you. I would please ask for the name, title, phone number, address, any way I can communicate with them on what's happening with Value Line. Also, I see on your operating budget, you cut costs, but your operating costs are much higher. If there's somebody I can talk to about that, the treasurer or anybody, that would help me also to understand what's going on there, cutting of the budgets. My husband and I have been retired for ten years. Our pension has not gone up, our social security has increased twelve percent in the last two years. And most of you know that cost of living in this beautiful county is thirty to forty percent higher now. So I need more money and so do you.
Your time's up. Do you want to finish what you're saying?
Just one more minute if I could.
That's up to Ellen.
Thank you, thank you so much. Please allow me, if you can, to know the cost of the quote that Value Line gave you for this year. What I would like to do is go to the state of the capital, talk to legislators about getting enough funding, writing a grant to give you the library enough money to keep Value Line going online for the next two years. I would love to do that. I think it's important for everybody. Also, I need to talk to the state representatives about the negative part of cutting Value Line. Because when you cut Value Line, you give me and other people who do investments less chance to earn money. In the 401K system, I pay tax on that, the tax goes to the state, the money goes to the library, it's a win-win for everybody else. Thank you for the extra time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Well, anyone on the line? No other, okay, thank you. Alright, next is our reports, Internal Affairs. It was Erin, she's not here. How was that? That wasn't.
Was Laura there?
I think. Erin? We did not meet. Internal Affairs did not meet.
Uh, in December?
Oh, in December we did. Gosh, I can't remember what we talked about.
Well, that's me too. Yeah, I don't remember it all. Alright, well, we'll see if Erin wants to give us a report when she comes back.
Okay.
Next is the Public Affairs Committee.
We did meet, and Denise, Denise did an incredible job putting together timelines and possible resources and responsibilities for whenever we decide to pursue additional funding. And she's also working up a plan for what board members and all of us can do out in the community to start getting people thinking about why the library needs more resources. So, I really, really appreciate all the ones who joined.
Thank you. Governance Committee.
Alright, so we met, and we talked about CEO evaluations. I'll be sending out links to all the board members for using Google Forms, I think is what we're gonna try again this year. And if you could fill that out and get it back. The goal for whomever runs the governance is to try to get those CEO evaluations from last year done by the first quarter. And in the last couple of years, we've kind of lingered into second quarter and trying not to do that again this year. We also had an update on the trustee position, which I'm sure we'll get to here in a minute. In addition to that, we talked about office of discussion, officers for next, for this year, which of course we will discuss later on. And we also talked about discussion points about trustee goals for twenty twenty-four. If we as trustees want to establish a goal set for this year on what it is that we as trustees want to accomplish for the year. So that was a discussion point, and I'm sure that we will have continued discussions for that on members running governance this year. And that's it.
Alright. I don't see any of our liaisons here, so move on to board comments. I'll start and say, I had the wonderful opportunity to tour Penrose this afternoon. It's a great opportunity, everything's running smoothly over there. It's really exciting.
That's why you went there, right?
That's why I went there, it was just a quick pop in, pop in check. No, so I got a chance to, to go visit our collections team and see all of what they do, and it was a lot of fun. Even saw the Duckfoot Chalice, which is one of my favorite things to tell people about and show pictures of, it's great. And then we sat and did liaison interviews, Ms. Dugan is going to be our new trustee. I'm fine, if you want to go ahead and come up here, we got confirmation from the city, not county yet, but she was on the agenda today, so we're assuming that it was all good to go. So, we'd like to welcome Ms. Dugan to the Board of Trustees. Other comments?
I will go, I met with Justin's, Justin, yeah, there he is, Justin Hasting. And it was a great meeting, his team really does do a lot, and I had a, a, a very good discussion with a lot of the people that work for him, and I used to work in IT when I was working on a library system. So I know the challenges and the issues that they run into on a, on a regular basis, so I really appreciated that.
Great meeting with you too.
Yep.
We all enjoyed it.
And in these days, I'll schedule a meeting to go to the data center.
Yes.
That was offered, so I'm curious about that.
Yeah. Okay. Any comments? Next move to our business items, consents. We have the minutes of November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, Board of Trustees meeting, and minutes of December sixth, twenty twenty-three, Board of Trustees special meeting. There are no objections. Next up, under new business, discussion. So, want to make sure, I had a conversation with Laura about this, so I wanted to make sure we had a discussion on it, so I could kind of explain what's going on with this agenda and moving on. So, if you look down at your agenda, we've got decision items. So leave it at six, seven, six, three, nine. That are not ready for us to vote on, however, per the bylaws, we are required to vote on them in January. So, what we're going to do is when we move to adjourn this meeting, we will move to adjourn at a later time in January. So it will be a continuation of this regularly scheduled meeting at that point. So it satisfies both the bylaws and the needs of the district. So that comes to discussion of, when does everybody have fifteen, twenty-ish minutes later in January? After everything's ready, when, do you mean a when, everything will be ready for us to vote on it?
Maybe just some time at, what is Tuesday, right? Maybe the end of next week.
End of next week.
So.
So, and it makes me feel a little hard for me, I prefer the week after.
That will be fine, week after it will be a break because we have, yes.
Can we go to twenty-second? We have a date that you're looking for on that date? Waiting for someone to throw out something that works.
Twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth.
I was gonna say twenty-second, twenty-fourth.
I'm gonna be out of town first two days. Yeah. Well, so with this, it will be a fairly benign thing where we're just gonna vote on these couple of items, they're usually consent items, but they're just not ready yet. So, it will likely be a remote meeting, so I don't know if that convinces how, what's your availability on this.
Twenty-second, twenty-third, I'm gonna be on the plane twenty-third, so you're not gonna get me at all. Sorry, and. Twenty-second, I'm gonna be in meetings at the university all day, so that's not gonna work either, so, but twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, or twenty-sixth, I'm available to do it remotely.
I'm available any of those three evenings. It's gonna be on the phone.
Bye.
Okay. It's a Friday night, is that what you have, the twenty-sixth?
I shall I.
We'll be real quick, you can take the call and reply.
Okay, great, yeah, that'll work.
Dora, does the twenty-sixth work for you?
Yes, it does.
We did just.
It works.
Okay, so if you did like at five PM?
Yeah.
Would that work for everyone?
Sure.
Okay, so. And this is, the proposed agenda would be items six, seven, eight, nine?
So, yeah, so because it's a potential of this meeting, the work that would be done there would be the rest of the agenda. So we'll actually make a motion to adjourn after decision item five tonight, and then we will adjourn until January twenty-sixth at five PM. And I've got verbiage, so just you guys, I'm gonna get that, I've got verbiage that I can read, asking for a motion, so it's really.
I was gonna say the same thing, so.
Also was prepared in case Scott had questions about what we're doing. I've got the bookmarks all situated, so I'm ready to go. Alright, any questions about that? I know it's a little different than we normally operate, but everything's valid for Robert's rules, and this keeps us in compliance with our bylaws. Great. Any questions?
Okay. Erin?
Yes, ma'am.
So we're looking at all the decision items, so it's gonna be number four through nine that we would meet on, on the twenty-sixth, is that correct?
Six through nine.
Six through nine.
We'll handle four and five tonight, and then six through nine.
Okay, just clarification, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Alright, there's no other questions or comments. Moving on to decision twenty-four dash one dash one, officer appointments, and first up is the role of president.
Alright, so as part of our bylaws, the Governance Committee looks at and asks for existing trustees who are interested in that position of president. For twenty twenty-four, the Governance Committee would slate Dora, who is online, to be president for this year. Do you want me to just go through all three of these? It's gonna be easier in particular.
Yeah.
For vice president, it would be myself, and then for secretary treasurer, it would be Erin, and unfortunately Erin's not here tonight. So, those would be the three officers. I would be willing to open up any additional nominations for anybody who are interested. If not, then I guess we just vote on officers as a.
Can we just vote on the slate?
Yeah.
Of officers, so, do we have a motion to elect Dora as president, Scott as vice president, and Erin as secretary treasurer for the twenty twenty-four. Correct. I'll make that motion, so move it, move it, move it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, congratulations, Madam President and the rest of the slate. As Dora is virtual, I'm gonna continue running the meeting this evening, and she'll take over at the next meeting. Twenty twenty-four committee chairperson appointments, Mr. Taylor.
Okay, so the Governance Committee, Internal Affairs Committee, and Public Affairs Committee obviously did not meet for this month, but we will start doing that next month in February. As of now, the only committee chair that we have is the Internal Affairs Committee, and we're looking at Erin to be handling that committee. And at this point, the rest of the committees, if we could, I would like to do that online, just via email, and I'll make sure that Laura is included and report yourself. And you have to go to every single one of those. So, I will include that, but I will be reaching out to a few other people. Obviously Erin's not here, so I need to get in touch with her to see which committee she would like to be on, or if she would like to run a committee.
Alright, okay, any questions? Man, we're flipping through this.
We're all anxious for the budget.
I know, well, good news. Decision four, twenty-four dash one dash two, twenty twenty-three, general capital, special revenue designated funds, budget adjustment resolutions.
Is that sound off?
It is.
Which is that?
I believe this is the resolution for twenty twenty-three budget adjustments, that's not right?
Yeah.
Good evening, everybody. Having really fun thirty days. So the first thing I wanted to cover was a resolution for the twenty-three budget adjustments. And hoping by next year, this would have moved all these into the actual year that were happening, so. This probably isn't a normal thing to be doing a resolution for the previous year, but the first meeting of the fall, I think, next year, it's, it's possible to do it. So the format on the schedule behind the actual resolution, you may have noticed that it's changed a little bit. Instead of just presenting the general funds, I also presented the capital fund changes and the self-insurance fund changes, so you can see the interplay between these three funds. I had, for quite a while, talked about moving four hundred thousand dollars out of the self-insurance fund back over to the general fund, and it became apparent after I started looking at year-end numbers that that wasn't gonna happen. So, that one didn't get moved, but I did manage to move five hundred thousand dollars out of the general fund, which is the capital fund. And that's probably the biggest transaction that abnormal, or kind of not a normal transaction for us at this time, because we're funding our capital and our self-insurance through our property tax directly. And the reason why I ended up moving those funds over to the capital fund is to help with the Penrose securities, issues, and security's basically gonna be putting through a bunch of RFPs where we have to, if it stays below a hundred thousand, of course we won't. But I kind of wanted to set that one up for success from the very first day of the year, so that Gary and Michael would go into that with enough funds in a, in a spot. I, I put it into a contingency fund for now, but as we unfold these into different phases, we've of course already started the phase one, which is the shelving, and we'll start breaking those out as projects, and, and one of the things I want to do with this next year is financial statements, I'll keep them short, like you've been seeing, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna add supplemental information on the back of them, similar to what we did in the audit, to show the activity, more detailed activity on the capital funds, and probably even the designated funds, which is, it's part of the general ledger, but it's a place where we can track activity for our grants to show revenue and expense going through one, one number. Other than that, I, I did make an adjustment to our spec, specific ownership tax, that's, that will probably come in somewhere around three million six twenty-five, I'd budget it three million five. Our E rate, E rate funding again is down a little bit. Move that down, our donations. We, that's actually a, a thing I thought from the beginning of last year, where we had put some donations into the capital fund, and I just was, it's a pretty small amount, but it's needed to be moved. Employee contributions, I noted throughout the year that that was running way below what we were doing, and I believe the number that we were doing is correct, it just was an error in the budgeting, so I fixed that. And, and then of course, we've been talking about interest income forever through the, pretty much the whole year of twenty-three, and I had a one point three million dollar adjustment for that. As all of you know, that money will go to funding the Manischew Springs renovation and addition on that building when we start getting bills for that. Brand activity, these are things that just kind of happens every year, we'll, we'll have a list of brands that we think we're gonna get. And they'll go out and find new money, and so I ended up having to do adjustments to our brand designated funds. Generally, it's a, it's an offsetting transaction, the, the revenue to the top and the expenditures, it's a matching. This year that didn't happen, and actually, some of that money is gonna sit in the designated fund for a little bit before they actually come out. A little bit of insurance funds came in on our abatement. So, basically recognize that, and, and then you can see down below where I'm showing a transfer into the capital fund from the capital, oh, I'm sorry, from the general fund. If you flip to the backside, that'll, that'll show the expenditures, and, I'm gonna flip back. So, our revenue as amended would be moving from for the general fund, thirty-five million six hundred thousand roughly, to thirty-seven million seventy-six. Little, little movement on the capital, and, and again, very little movement on the self-insurance fund. Expenditures on the next page, I thought it might be helpful for you guys to see all the adjustments that have been done so far this year, and where the kind of amended number is right now, as of this adjustment, so that would be general fund thirty-five million four twenty-five. Every year we have an encumbrance, if you look at our financial statements, you'll see our fund balance, it's, I think, page forty-nine, roughly, forty-nine, fifty-one, something like that. We'll always have dollars in there for assigned dollars, and it's always for encumbrances, purchased contracts, and then the library and material. So every year we roll that number, and that's what, that five hundred thousand, which is pretty consistent over the year. Transfers out, there's the five hundred thousand going from the general fund. The grant, we've recognized another seventy-five thousand for our peer navigation proof concept for the security group. Vacancy position savings came in an additional one point five million dollars. And then, even though the money hasn't been spent yet on the general fund, I actually show that it, it's coming into the general fund that we use as an expenditure, that's where I mentioned the security upgrades. And that's where that'll be pocketed. So, our net effect of all this on the general fund is a addition of two million thirty-seven thousand dollars. The capital fund pretty much stays unchanged because the insurance almost offset the thirty-three thousand dollars that was moved out, and the five hundred thousand was a wash. And then, self-insurance fund, you can see where that has crept down a little bit, it's from last year's eight twenty-three to seven forty-five. And I'm actually anticipating from the activity I'm seeing going through that fund, we will probably end next year somewhere around a hundred if everything happens, where I'm thinking it will. I'm hoping it doesn't, because hundreds are a little low. And if we start creeping in that direction, I would probably lose some more money from the general fund over that, but, I mean, I'll wait and see what. The big unknown for this year is our lag period, so from March to April, we always watch our insurance, complaints that come in three months after the year ends, and we always have to accrue that back into the year we're closing the auditors, and I got them to give me a preliminary report, and it looks like it's probably gonna be somewhere like three hundred thousand. December actually crept up a little bit, we've been running about one eighty, and we ended December with about a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in claims. So, it's kind of normal, people start seeing the doctor in December, and, you know, trying to take advantage of their deductibles being met and whatnot.
I do that too.
Yeah, everybody does, I did. Oh, sorry. Yeah, I'm not supposed to. So, I believe, I'm really gonna read through the resolution, I guess. One of you will have to do that.
That's, that's, that's.
It's a random passage. Okay, I, I do have a question about that.
Yes.
This has to be sent tonight, right?
Yeah.
So since Dora is not here.
So, because it's a twenty-three adjustment?
Oh, so.
This, this actually will fall under Erin.
Okay, yeah. Have the same question.
He's gotta do one more legal thing.
And then, I know that we haven't gotten it, but it still says Dr. Stone.
The what?
This one still says Dr. Stone.
Oh.
On the resolution to adopt an appropriate.
Yes.
I know, right? That has to change.
Okay.
So, we have more people, we'll take turns. We agreed the first one.
So, Scott, Scott, were you gonna read?
I'll, I'll.
Okay, so the one that, I wanted to make sure you read the right one, so you, you need to read the resolution with twenty-three budget adjustments.
Okay, thank you. Resu, uh. A resul, a resolution appropriating additional sums of money to defray expenditures and excess amounts budgeted for Pike's Peak Library District Colorado Springs Call Out. Whereas this resolution is adopted for the following take, causes, revenues and other financial sources. Increase revenues for specific ownership taxes by a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to address higher than expected revenue levels for the twenty-three budget. Decrease revenues by three hundred and six thousand five hundred and six dollars for the deferral of capital projects that was to be funded by the federal E rate program, which was. For the deferral of capital projects that was to be funded by the federal E-rate program, which was included in the twenty-three budget. Increase revenues for the general fund by thirty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and decrease. Capital fund by thirty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars to reclass the addition of software program previously planned as a capital project. Decrease revenues for the self-insurance fund by a hundred thirty-two thousand dollars for for lower than expected collections of benefit costs from employees. Increase revenues by one million three hundred forty-nine thousand dollars for the general fund and seven hundred fifty-five dollars for the self-insurance fund for. Income not anticipated in twenty-three budget. Increase revenues by two hundred and forty thousand two hundred thirty dollars for grants not originally anticipated in budget. Increase revenues by twenty thousand two hundred forty-nine dollars for insurance uh proceeds from planes. On libraries at Twenty-One C, East and Penrose that were not anticipated for twenty-twenty-three budget. Increase revenues for the capital fund for security upgrades. Five hundred thousand dollar and transfer funds to the general fund of thirty-three thousand dollars for RHG archival management system originally budgeted in capital funds. Expenditures and other finance financing uses. To increase the twenty-twenty-three general fund budget for the utilization fund but balance which is fair for income. Encumbrances as follows, library materials, hundred seventy-four thousand thirty dollars. Other encumbrances, three hundred eighty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy dollars. Total encumbrances of five hundred sixty-one thousand four hundred dollars. To decrease the twenty-twenty-three budget, one million five hundred twenty-two thousand ninety-seven dollars for personal cost appropriation. Savings, wages, applicable applicable taxes and required district. Retirement contributions, recalibrating personal costs based on financial. Uh, I'm sorry, on final. Personnel levels as of the final working day of twenty twenty-three December twenty-four, twenty twenty-three. Uh, to decrease the twenty-twenty-three capital budget, fund budget by thirty-three thousand. For the transfer of funds to the general fund for the RHG archival management system. To decrease the twenty-twenty-three general fund budget by three hundred thousand. Dollars and two hundred thousand dollars for security upgrades for Penrose Library and across the district. To increase the twenty-twenty-three budget for security upgrades for Penrose Library and across the district by. Two hundred ninety-eight thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars and one hundred ninety-eight thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars respectively. To increase the twenty-twenty-three budget by seventy-five thousand one hundred dollars for various grants and and usage. Of designated funds which were not known when the twenty-twenty-three budget was approved. Now, therefore, it is resolved by the Board of Trustees of Pike's Peak Library District, Colorado Springs, Colorado. That the twenty-twenty-three appropriation of the general fund is hereby decreased. From thirty-five thousand, I'm sorry, thirty-five millions four hundred twenty-five thousand one hundred eighty-six dollars. To thirty-five million thirty-nine thousand five hundred and eighty-nine dollars as presented in attachment A. And that the twenty-twenty-three appropriation of the capital's fund is hereby increased. From four million four hundred fifteen thousand two hundred forty-nine dollars to four million nine hundred forty-five thousand four hundred ninety-eight dollars. As presented in attachment A adopted this ninth day of January twenty twenty-four. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, resolution theories. We, uh, we made it to the agenda.
Like the late agenda, Laura, you wanted to add the mail certification?
Yes. Okay, well.
Which, how would you say that?
We'll put that after the budget, yeah, it's it's after. It's, you can't do it until after you guys approve the appropriations for the budget. And speaking of that, I did ask King to go change Dr. Stole, I'll change. I'll change that over to you, Scott, because I'll need, I need to have that signed tonight so that I can submit the bill and uh. I'll tell her to go ahead and put your name on it as vice president.
Alright, so the next item up is decision twenty-four dash one dash three. Twenty twenty-four original adopted budget resolution. Mister Dean.
That's this one, right?
The one that.
Yes.
Well, where do you find it?
Yes. I'm trying to tell her. You just happen to be in the right building, she can go to her office. Alright, so um. I believe what I'll do, I will start with the the actual uh. OAB um document that we all have in front of you. And just like the guides you through, so I'm, I'll go through that, um, hit the high points. And then again, as we did last year, um, use very similar wording, um. The resolution to to adopt and appropriate the twenty-four budget would be written to record and then whatever. And I apologize for you guys not getting this ten or eleven ago, it was still being, it was still in the oven. Um. So the the first page would be um. Even though it's like four pages in, it's page number one, um, the overall. Budget for twenty-four. Um. We ended up with uh. Property tax at thirty-five million five oh six. I put a three point five million in for the specialty ownership tax, which is basically registration on vehicles and trailers and that kind of thing. Um. Interest on. Some taxes, forty. The payment in lieu of a tax, we actually have one entity that pays their taxes to that uh to us separately through a check, and that's what that is. So we end up at nearly um thirty, a little over thirty-nine million, I think that's probably the highest property tax number we've ever seen. Um. Next section is basically operating, which includes our intergovernmental. Uh, which, you know, would be like uh Actfor and uh. Icicle or Ic- Ic. And uh.
Could you define what that is just for majors?
So um, those are, those are both grants from the federal government. Uh.
Thank you.
And and they come. No, don't worry, the acronyms.
Oh, half the government is just knowing the acronyms, once you figure that out, it's really pretty easy.
Um, so they flow to us through the Department of Education and uh Colorado Department of Education. Tammy and Taylor have both had a ton of experience with those of, those of the guys.
And also, if I may add, that when we receive federal funding, it does not impact our table. Okay. So even though the state administrates those funds, the money comes directly from the federal government. Okay. Just to make sure also, because we do not receive. The state does not support us, we're supported by. Yes.
Yeah, so along those lines, we would tend to go after federal dollars, even though they're they're generally a lot more work. And private.
Yes.
Um, cause once we hit any kind of state, it gets tabulated into our table and it's.
Thank you, thank you for that, I appreciate that.
Uh, donations is showing up slightly, um, employee contributions, I think that's more the level we're gonna actually see. Um. The other operating income that would include our investment income, I think I put five hundred thousand dollars in there this year. Um, I kinda like believe that. Last year was probably a big anomaly and we're not gonna see that forever. So I just stopped five hundred, but probably more more realistic than putting one point five in there. Uh. Personnel expenses, uh, we're. About one percent. That, uh, last year, we we gave a six percent increase, um, much of that due to stationary pressure. And our pension costs have gone up for the district. Uh, a decision was made. Quite a, quite a few years ago that the increases that we're having, and I probably most pensions are doing this to be able to keep up with. With the cost of running those. Uh, we made a decision to keep the the percentage that each employee pays upon climbing here at eight percent. Fix it that and the increases were gonna flow through the district, so last year it was ten point eight percent. And this year, I believe it's uh. So we see a little bit of movement with that, uh, so we gave a six percent raise last year, this year we were able to do five. And that also includes um. Our insurance costs. And they've been kinda going up this last year, it was a nice surprise that we didn't have the kind of increase we had the previous year, but we still. Everybody's seeing the same thing. And the capital outlay, um, you'll notice on that one that the million dollars. From last year, um, and then our. Preliminary balance budget, I put a million dollars in there. But once the dust settled on the whole uh HH proposal and the special session and all that. Um, our actual mill levy came down. Um, but because of the increased uh net assess valuation. Uh, I think it landed somewhere around two and a half trillion. Uh, we did end up picking up uh additional. Revenue from that and I clouded all into capital. Actually, we did, I just, I just did the pen. Uh, page two looks at. Uh, a little more detail. My fund. So similar to what I just broke out on the budget adjustment, you'll see those three funds that that we use most of the time. General fund, of course, carries the brunt of the load and things getting paid, it's our operating account. Uh, we are. Seeing a net change there of five hundred, a negative five hundred sixty-five thousand. Uh. So when we did our preliminary budget. Um, balance budget uh workshop, we. Board decided to put one point five million dollars into the the budget, which basically came out of the fund balance. And then to work sessions through the rest of the year. Uh, y'all decided to have me take five hundred thousand dollars out, so there's still a million dollars in that, and I, I mean, when we come to that, you'll know. Uh. It's kind of a big red thumb. But that's what's causing that five hundred sixty-five thousand dollar negative. So if we were to say we don't wanna do that somewhere this year, then I would make an adjustment, we'd actually be showing uh the budget in the web. Uh, I already kinda talked a little bit about self-insurance and kinda where we're expecting that uh the poll. So one thing that we did for this last round of insurance was. The district went from about seventeen percent contribution. Um. Cost sharing on our insurance fund to more like twenty, twenty-one percent. So. That is, that's one reason why um we're digging into that fund balance there just a little bit.
Is that three ninety-four?
Uh, yeah, the self-insurance fund is is uh. Showing a net change of a minus two hundred thirty-three thousand, and then by the end of the year, it's that's where. I'm anticipating to somewhere around a hundred, which is a little thin, I generally like to keep more amounts of of premiums in there.
Yeah.
So I'll keep an eye on that and and move some more over if I need to. Page three is our uh fund balance projection. Uh, the column on the far left is our fund balances audited, so we ended the year and. Generally, what uh most of us are interested in is the unassigned um fund balance, which is about mid-page. And we ended uh on the general fund, ten million six hundred fifty-two thousand. Uh, total fund balance is eighteen five seventy-six, but obviously. The rest of it's kinda locked up in capital, you can see there's four point four million dollars there. And the assign, that's our encumbrances that was on the other page a few minutes ago. And then tucked into the restricted is our emergency taper um spending. And gifts and grants. And the very top one is uh. Pre-pays. And we generally have, I mean, that's a pretty. Solid number, every year we'll have about a half a million dollars in pre-pays because uh collection management. Keeps track of and other groups, but they're the base of databases. Um, tons and tons and tons of databases. So as I was rolling this forward, um, I. Did a deep dive on what I thought, you know, this year was gonna end at and somewhat of an advantage, you know. Having this go out a little longer till they got eleven months of actual and so. Uh, December, we've seen a lot of purchasing activity and stuff go through, so. Um. I anticipate that being a pretty solid balance. Uh, twelve, six for the unassigned. And then. The five sixty-five, if we do go ahead and spend the million dollars on the um boat. The ballad, then we would choose something close to a five hundred thousand dollar bid in our. Unassigned would probably come down to something close to twelve. So this whole thing does not take into account um. Our actual numbers, cause I I don't have actuals for December and I'm still working on November. So um, I was being very conservative on the two million dollar lift on our projected. Um, and twenty-two to twenty-three. I really kind of anticipate that's gonna be higher than that. And but. Like I said, I was trying to be more conservative and uh wait for the. Gold to fall. Anyway, we're, we're in uh, we're in good shape. And um. We'll end up with a fund balance if all these numbers were to come through of about. Uh, twenty-one million dollars. So I think again is a a number that's higher than. Most we've had in the past, oh, and. And. Capital, you can, I I wanna, so you can see the capital moving down a little bit, cause. We did um pull some of that out of there by finishing projects this last year. So I'm thinking that one will probably come in about. Two million seven, seven, six, and that includes the five hundred that we just approved and move over from twenty-three. And I, I didn't even take a stab in the dark at what I thought they would do for work in uh in next year, I just. Uh, added in the two point seven million dollars that was we're asking for. But obviously that balance had moved down as they finished things.
Can you give me a couple of examples of your encumbrances too?
Um, it's anything, uh, so our, our computer system uh has a requisition purchase order.
Okay.
Um.
So it could be pencils.
Yeah, it could, it could be anything, and generally, we, you know, purchase order things over five and or below five hundred dollars. Although there are certain departments uh where I kind of encourage them to do POs on everything. Uh, IT is one of them, uh, facilities is one of them. Uh, security, sometimes it's got a lot of stuff going on, it's just, it's easier to track it in the system and on a piece of paper and the. But yeah, it it can be. Anything, it's, it also includes all the capital. Um, stuff that gets put into a requisition, we have an order and we just wait for it to come in. Uh, some, some of those are quite large ticket over, ticket orders, obviously. Um. So the next section. Pretty much focuses on revenue. I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time on this, cause I I did more so on the beginning of this, but. Um, what page four will show you is more of a breakdown on the intergovernmental um. Stuff that we get, E-rate. Um. So E-rate's another federal program, uh. So E-rate's another federal program. Uh. You can choose to get refunded two ways. We we go with the, we'll spend it first and get reimbursed later. We could and have talked about switching over to um. We pay our twenty percent because we're actually because of Penrose Library being in the. Um. Colorado Springs School District. That's our home office. In fact, that's. The biggest reason why it is. Um, we are able to um recoup eighty percent of qualifying spend and most of it's I T-ish kind of things. And it generally has to be focused on improving services for uh patrons. Um, they don't, they kind of frown on us trying to put brand new computers at everybody's desk going this side of the wall. But um. It's, it's something that we, yeah, it's something we've uh we've utilized for a really long time. We. We actually um get an eighty percent discount per se on our internet, uh, because we can do that for them. Um, they recently, um, they did. Was it hard points? Access points, hard access points. So we're getting those all changed down. So the speed. We have um a lot of people, if you were around these libraries during twenty twenty. We had a lot of people sitting outside um using our our Wi-Fi. Uh. Yeah, the the next, the next one is. Is basically year over year. Page five is year over year. Page four was just breaking it out by the plan. Section three goes into our expenditures. So the very. Two next pages are total, you know, basically combines our operating with our with our personnel class. Um. So. This is our, this is our new format. And we did our our reorg in September of last year. And. So the branch administration is coming up under. Um. Two individuals, uh, the director and assistant director and the same thing with our programming. All that was split out into separate. Smaller groups and now it's, they do the same things, but they're just getting managed differently and it's more collaborative and maybe they. You know, tend to get together more. Um. But I mean, the the red basically. I'm gonna actually jump over to the the more detailed operating and the expenditures, so um. That'll get into what's being spent wherever a little bit better than the summary. So collection management, I'm I'm guessing on that one, um. It's. The library material, obviously, when I. Or or it didn't go up, not as much percentage wise as as the uh collection management, the operating side of it. Some of these, I I'm gonna probably have to look into these. A little deeper. Um, many of them are are not that big, but some of these bigger ones, I'll probably look at them a little bit deeper and if. If we need to. Fix something or modify the the budget that that gets. Approved tonight, we'll do similar to what we've done in the previous year. That is basically we'll do an amendment. And kind of explain why we're doing it, but it's correcting. So.
What, what, what's jumping out at you that might be an adjustment?
Uh. Collection management, um. There are, and you made.
The collection manager, actually, what we see, that was one of the goals, to deliver the balanced budget, to look all the services, to look at data. That's what happened. They overlooked at data, we looked at usage, we looked at services and databases that could make duplicates. That's why you see like that, that was we came like then recommendations came. So uh because you're looking at seven percent, correct, Andy?
Uh, well, the one above it, the, so the one above it's actually the the non-library material and spend for collection management. It's, it's a. About eighteen percent. So it's, the, it's showing the hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar red. Means that we're spending about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more this year than last year. So that it might just be normal growth. It it might be um.
It's.
You know, I put a number in the wrong place.
Yeah. No, that's just I wanna see what was.
Yeah.
Catching your eye.
But um. Bottom line, we're actually um. Only a one percent more. There were fourteen million. Fourteen million, six hundred dollars, fourteen five four. We're, we've only increased that from the prior year by less than two hundred thousand, so. pockets here and there. We, you know, we've had things aligned differently and and that's the other thing that we'll probably see on this is. Some of the realignment, I would have had to realign numbers that were set in a different structure, like through September. While I wasn't able to go back and pinpoint, move everything perfectly to where it's at now, so. Um, we will see some.
Moving forward, it'll change and show.
Yeah, it'll, it'll start um getting more history behind it. And so it would be more apples to apples and.
Okay.
So I I can definitely see there's gonna be some what looks to be a problem that really isn't because I. We're pushing a lot of cost into an account that didn't have anything and I was trying to capture everything that I. Could that would have been there if it had been set up that way, but I wouldn't catch it all.
Okay.
And I think because the personnel budget, page ten and eleven, you see a lot more reds there. And I personally think a lot of this is is because we did move a lot of people around from different departments that they weren't in before they got um. Reslotted into another place and I definitely wouldn't have caught all of the costs associated with that person that got it moved over. But, you know, as time goes by, we'll be, by the time we get to the end of this budget year, uh, we will have had more than a year in place and. So all that stuff would have settled down and that would be, you know, you know, another mark to do twenty-five's budget.
If I may, just for you also, John, to know, like, for instance, in a CEO's office, right now there are three people, before it was two, right? And there were other departments as well. If you look at programming. They were like, oh, a lot of programming were combined together. So now there is one programming and then you see all of that. So that's how the reorg also would happen. That's why you see all of that.
That makes sense.
The changes, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Um. So. Again, look at the bottom line, um. It's two percent. Two percent, uh, so between the two numbers. It's uh about thirty, thirty-eight million dollars and we're within three percent. As last year, so. Um. Again, the teams that do this, all the management on that side of the building, Tammy's. Crew, um, has a lot to do with us staying tight on those numbers, the support side, of course, and. And Teona, I mean, I really never have to worry about. What kind of going off the. Conservative spending path.
Good job.
You're just spreading yourself out, huh?
Yeah. So thank you for making my jokes. Uh.
Let's spend less.
I'll probably regret that.
Sure you will.
Yeah, I know, she does, I would like to. Um. So there, there's another number that um page ten and eleven that. You call a vacancy, um, savings. Uh, attrition savings, um, and I, are are you familiar with what that kind of is? Okay. So, um. I I could just say. Heather and H R and all the managers who uh are constantly trying to fill positions, um. We have, I don't know what our churn number is, but it's pretty high. Um. I mean, there's, there's a lot of people, there's a lot of people that stay, obviously, because our pension is very attractive and. And the library is a nice place to work for, but but you also have younger people who, you know, my son's twenty-eight and hasn't moved yet and he talks about it all the time. Um, so they maybe tend to to move on a little bit more. Our headcount numbers, so what you're seeing on this page is total authorized positions and then a full-time equivalent of that. So our number right now for twenty-four is four hundred and thirty-one. And that's, that's at a point in time that isn't necessarily yesterday. And the other thing that we have in there is if we've had to bring any temporaries in here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, some of those may be in here and they're gonna show as a full-time, one like a body full-time. But obviously, if they're temporary, they're not. And so that'll kind of ebb and flow as we go through the year and. And I obviously, we watch that a lot, because one, they're trying to stay on top of keeping libraries manned and all that, so. Um. You can see, I could go back many years and and that number really just doesn't change a whole lot.
In my weekly update, I provide that H R dashboard that Heather provides to me, so you will see that. How many people left? And when you see a word termination, obviously someone might just left, but that's the legal term, just wanted to throw it out there. And you will see that also, the changes in that. So that the the trustees, you always have that information.
Um. Section four is capital. Um, so again, we we locked in on a. A really small number last year. And actually delayed. I think we delayed about two point six million dollars last year. And then at the last minute, we decided that the million dollars that was there wasn't really gonna get funded with real dollars. It was gonna get funded with existing projects. Which Gary kind of loved that. Uh, so this year, um. Like I said, we. We had an upswing between the preliminary balance budget and the last numbers and. And because we've been delaying on things forever, I, everything that I could get my hands on is getting swept into capital. Um. Pretty much, we had two point. It ended up settling at about two point six million dollars, what was requested. And so I had a little bit extra and I just went in, I I actually just gave that to security. Um, he's got a laundry list of uh. Of things that need to be addressed and and so I'm trying to keep that.
If you've seen twenty twenty-three, the security has no budget account there, because actually uh funds weren't allocated security specifically before. So that's another change going in twenty twenty-four. That's that actual security and then you will also see a difference. And Michael has no idea what these numbers would be, by the way, just so I think it would be good for him, because I tell him he's getting money. He doesn't have to worry, but he's like, are you sure?
So.
I always like more to be.
Nothing before I read.
So, yeah, for the longest time, he basically was getting a lot of help managing his projects throughout his own facilities. But obviously, that kind of puts everybody.
He did a hundred percent.
That could be one dollar or?
Exactly.
Um, these are the projects that we're. Planning on doing.
Yes, yes.
I I am curious.
So the uh, the parking lot replacement?
Yeah.
Is in the.
Yeah, I I.
I wanted to point that out to you, because that was one of your pets.
So, so so Gary, I know that. Oh, well done. That kind of. Um, so when you get a chance to take a look at this, I imagine that you still have a lot of projects in. That are pretty safe assumption. It's just that every year we always. Gary's the first project list that we just have deferred, 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 deferred. And so I'm, I'm really concerned that at some points. It's gonna be a really long list, yeah. So and I'm hoping that these numbers that you've got here, um. I know they're budget numbers, but I hope that they're. Close to what we're expecting.
Yeah, I I, well. Uh, both, both facilities in I T, uh, because they're the bulk of what's in capital. Both of those groups really are are pretty accurate about their estimates. Uh, Gary's. You've been here twenty years, Gary? Eighteen? Uh, so he's had a lot of practice. But no, he's, he's really good at keeping his his jobs under budget and.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Rarely does he ever come back and say, hey, I need more money for something. It just doesn't count. And.
And sometimes also the security projects were budgeted on the facilities.
Right, right.
Right, then in security now it's six hundred and sixty-three thousand, right? That's also, like, it's also working together. And what I will also want to mention that before also in his public services, if even when, if we let go back to public times. There were a lot of funds that public services gave to communications, gave to like, because it's the one organization, so how we.
Yeah.
Plan and sometimes those capital numbers are not projected here. You don't see it, but there are certain areas that then. The department has discussed that, hey, do you have money? Can I just like, can you allocate that? So. And of course, there's some surprises that we never know that are going to happen, right? So.
So the last thing I want to point out on this detailed list is capital I, capital reserve I T. So what you'll see on I T on, well, every year, um, are a list of items that have E-rate on them. So what that means for them is it's a big dollar amount sitting there.
But it's.
But, yeah, it's, it's being spent on something that, um, we'll get eighty percent, but it always goes to the top. They don't get it back in the refund, so. It's, it's kind of a little misleading as far as how much money they're getting, because they're not really. Yeah, yeah, it's, it's not, um, you know, a big project that they might want.
And I know a lot of people also had questions regarding public services side, if uh if there are any reductions made to that budget. And. No, there were no reductions made to public services side. And it comes, it comes to programming and all of that. So that's kind of also, I wanted to make this, all the reductions were made. In a preliminary balance budget. Those are the ones that we we see here. So. We have not reduced anything else in this budget what is presented. So I know, as I said, I saw you always have questions about that. What programs have you cut? So we have not cut anything what you saw uh in December, it was December.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, just wanted, I'm sure there's people who want to know also in this dispute.
So, um, you know, I know I'm Michelle Tabor, so I save the best for last. And, uh, you know, and then I made it extra small, so you know, I was gonna say, put your glasses on, yeah, so.
There's colors. I always got lost.
So I, I just debated for a while and this, this spreadsheet that this thing's built on is actually larger than than one page. But I thought, no, I I I can get this down to one page. They kind of, um. I was basically trying to show you the concepts and and kind of what happens in order for us to. Get the green light on what we get to take as revenue for property and then I um submit on our um certification for our mill levy. Uh, the whole thing starts with um property assess valuation, um, statements from the assessor's office. Um, I'm showing. Um, I'm showing you like two years worth of data there. So the final for last year, the preliminary in August. And then the final in December, which we generally get that around Thanksgiving. But this year because of the whole uh HH thing and. Draw down a little bit. Uh, but I mentioned a little earlier that we have seen about a three and a half. Or a two and a half trillion dollar lift on our assessed valuation. And and just to give you perspective. That resulted in us getting one point seven million dollars more. Or roughly that. Um, so to me, it's like, wow.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
I just kind of thought it was gonna be a little bit. Be, I mean, I'm I'm grateful, but I just thought, you know, it's two and a half trillion dollars. So the the.
Edwende, would you please clarify that library district is not receiving trillions of dollars?
Yeah, I'll I'll watch you all down to the. So aside from the assessed valuation being a big number. Uh, for Tabor. Uh, what drives the increases on that is inflation. You see that percentage there? And that's a forecasted number from the US Bureau of uh Labor Statistics. And they won't actually have the final one for this year, ten March, so we always have to kind of do. Uh, best information on that to take a number. And then about a little about mid page, there's also a thing called growth. So the growth percentage. So you can see that really got chopped after the legislative. Thing, it's almost zero. Prior to that, it was almost two. So, um.
You mean after the legislation that they passed after one seventy?
So I basically I'm just pointing out, so we got basically next to nothing off from growth. But so the two things that that are going on on this page after I get the the main data is, um. There is a state levy law that requires us to uh. If that was the only uh revenue limiting thing, then we couldn't raise our revenue more than five nine percent every year. But then Tabor came along and then it became, okay, the lower of these two numbers as computed is what you get to keep. Generally, that ends up being Tabor. Uh, last year, actually, um, it wasn't Tabor, Tabor was a lot higher than the state limit, so we got that. Uh, but. Each one of these little steps, A, B, C, D, um, basically are just going down through the process, the math of. Of computing, uh. Last year's revenue number times the growth factors, that's how I get to a. A new revenue number and then go through the calculations to figure out what the state's version of five and a half percent limited revenue is. Compare the two of them. Uh. The lower number than divide that back into the net assessed valuation to get our mill rate. And that's how the. About mid page, you can see there's a three point three four, so that's how that's derived. And then, um, every year, there's always abatements from taxpayers and delinquent taxes and whatnot, so we always get a. Like a abatement credit, so that's what that small. Uh, one point or point zero one four number is. So, uh, the. Last, um, judgment call is if uh. If the calculated number. Um, you you get an allowable number. And then you have your current mill levy and whichever of those two numbers is the lowest one, that's the one you get. So everything, whatever the lowest number is, that's what you get. Wish they'd changed. Make it the highest. Anyway, so on on uh eleven point eight trillion net assessed valuation, we ended up at thirty five million six fifty two. And. The pieces, how it got there down below. And I showed basically at the preliminary um balance budget, we actually didn't talk about. Um, kicking some of this um back to the taxpayer, but after we. Uh, noodled through what was happening with our capital, um. And our mill rate did come down from. Three point five one two to. Three point zero one. Six. Um. We felt like for the library, um, and for our patrons, that was a better thing to do was to. Try to. Plug some of these holes that have been created by delaying capital spending on fifteen buildings. Plus the property and all that other good stuff. Anyway, um.
Honestly, thank you for doing that. I know you do that, I know it's not. A plus B, C, it's a lot more than that, so, but I appreciate.
I kind of thought, um, one, I I know every, I everybody's got questions about Tabor and. And really, I kind of think this thing. Makes it a that's somewhat digestible as far as, okay, so that's how this it's math. And uh, you know, there's there's definite. Set points that you start with and you can't go beyond based on parameters. So it's. Pretty mathy for a legislative.
And also ways of being transparent and to show also to our taxpayers. How that mail gets calculated.
Any questions? Comments, concerns?
Why are you looking at me?
Look on your face, look like you're just waiting to to say something. So are you good?
And so the one more thing I wanted to mention was, so this obviously is condensed version of what we put out as a budget book, so. Uh, Jeremiah and I will be booked at the hip for a bit. Yeah, working on the the next budget book, which it's it's a little more informative, it. Kind of gets into more of the goals and. And uh why we do things and uh more personalized than. This type of thing, but this gets the job done for, you know, the dollars and cents and. You want to know, okay, what do we got and what do we want to spend it on? And you got any bad news, you got some good news, I think I had some good news.
That's what he does always, when he calls me, he just gives me like, do you want a good news or not, very good news?
Well, pretty much when she gets a call from me, especially out of the blue. It's usually not a good.
But it is a balanced budget, which is. Um, and when. How many years have they had balanced budgets in? Like last year and this year? But I think that's something you should possibly say, I mean, it's. It's a goal you try for and you succeeded.
Yeah, it's.
And not only can say that, with government dollars or.
It's, it's. It really, it's, I mean, it's, it's been a total joint effort, but it it's. It's been a ton of work for um public services and. You know, I keep picking on them because they're eighty five percent of the staff, they're eighty five percent of, you know, they're one hundred percent of what we do. And even when we went through the pandemic, um, looking at. That whole thing from the outside, how creative, um, everybody got, we got accolades from everywhere. They wanted to know, how'd you guys do that?
We didn't have sleep at night, that's how, sorry.
But, um. Yeah, I'll just say, I mean, we've got some really, really um smart people on. The library side and. And they put their heads together and. There's probably not a whole lot they won't be able to figure out simply somehow and. With the least amount of pain and suffering for the patron. Um, you know, you can't avoid that. Hundred percent, but and I really think that's. Forthright in your minds, their minds and. So it's it's a common goal, but and I just have been really impressed with with. What they've been able to do with less and they've always uh risen to the challenge.
Well, thank you.
Well, and you guys too, and this has been a hard two years for getting all the reports. Where you want them and of getting everything going and.
Definitely, it's, you know, the support and and. We're we're a team. We want, we want to see them succeed and and. So with with no questions, um. Kim, did you have an updated? Copy for the lucky person? I think Debbie's reading this one. She said she we're gonna go around the table, so I think that's.
She was saying run the table for a paragraph, I could do it. Listen up. Resolution to adopt and appropriate the twenty twenty four budget. A resolution summarizing expenditures and revenue for each fund. Adopting a budget and appropriating funds as outlined below for the Pike's Peak Library District. Colorado Springs, Colorado, for the calendar year beginning on the first day of January twenty twenty four. And ending on the last day of December twenty twenty four. Whereas pursuant to Colorado Local Government Budget Law. The Board of Trustees of the Pike's Peak Library District must adopt the annual budget for twenty twenty four by January thirty first. Twenty twenty four. And whereas the twenty twenty four original adopted budget. Must recognize revenues and have available fund balance. Sufficient to cover the appropriated expenditures set forth in the annual budget. And whereas a preliminary balance budget for twenty twenty four was submitted by the Chief Financial Officer. To the Board of Trustees on September twenty sixth, twenty twenty three, as required by Colorado Local Government Budget Law. And whereas pursuant to the notice published in accordance with Colorado Local Government Budget Law. The proposed twenty twenty four budget has been opened for inspection by the public. Since September twenty sixth, twenty twenty three. And whereas public hearings were held by the Board of Trustees on October eighteenth. Twenty twenty three and November fifteenth, twenty twenty three. In order to provide interested citizens. An opportunity to file or register any comments or objections. And to review evidence and hear testimony as presented to the board on the proposed twenty twenty four budget. And whereas up to and including this date. Said proposed budget has been open for inspection by the public and interested citizens. To be given an opportunity to file or register any objections to said proposed budget. Pursuing to go pursuant to Colorado Local Government Budget Law. And whereas, Attachment A outlines the revenue expenditures and fund balance details of the twenty twenty four budget. And whereas all expenditure changes made to the preliminary balance budget. To revenue and available fund balances are incorporated in the original adopted budget. As required by Colorado Local Government Budget Law. And now therefore, be it resolved by the Pike's Peak Library District Board of Trustees. Section one, that the budget as submitted, amended and summarized in Attachment A. Hereby is approved and adopted as the budget of the Pike's Peak Library District for the year twenty twenty four. The following sums are hereby appropriated from the revenues and available fund balances of each fund. To each fund for the stated purpose. General Fund, thirty million, one hundred thirty eight thousand, five hundred sixty nine dollars. Capital Fund, two million, seven hundred and twenty three thousand, three hundred and thirty two dollars. Self Insurance Fund, two million, six hundred and forty four thousand, two hundred and sixty nine dollars. Total, thirty five million, five hundred and six thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars. Section two, that the budget hereby approved and adopted shall be signed by the interim chief librarian. Chief Executive Officer filed with the Colorado Department of Local Affairs, Division of Local Government. And made a part of the public records of the Pike's Peak Library District, adopted this ninth day of January twenty twenty four.
We will change that.
I'm not reading it again.
To change interim to fiber or to strike interim, right?
Yeah, I think that's what described it, yeah.
So.
I just read it like it was.
If if she were that lucky. Do we have a motion to approve the amendment of the resolution striking the term interim? So moved. All in favor? Right, and now for the resolution, do you have a second on the amended resolution?
A second amendment?
Okay, perfect, uh, all in favor? And the opposed? Right, the amended resolution passes?
You don't wanna be, do you?
Alright, and now, uh, any motion to amend the agenda to insert an item between. Four dot B dot five and four dot B dot six, resolution to certify the twenty twenty four. Uh, all in favor? The opposed? Alright, uh, the certificate resolution to certify the twenty twenty four mill levy, disagree.
Uh, so this document is a result of of. Coming up with a budget and figuring out the. Mill rate based on table law and uh state levy law and. Was mentioned to in that document, um, I had mentioned there being a. Three point four seven total number and that represents thirty five million, eight hundred eleven dollars and. Uh, two hundred and thirty eight dollars. And so this document basically is a resolution to set the mill levies, uh, once you do that, then this. Form here, I will finish filling this out and um sign it and have it submitted by five o'clock tomorrow. To the County Assessor's Office, who will then. Roll them all together and submit them to the county commissioners, which I believe. They're set to approve these sometime in June.
The seventeenth, right, the deadline?
Uh, the treasurer's office did send out a letter, I got one saying, hey, because of the shifted timing on this. We can't collect taxes until we send out a tax bill, we can't do that. And it's normal as, I mean, because all this got delayed, so, um. Save your pennies accordingly because you might need them. This is basically what the. So, great, we don't have to worry about that.
Because you already approved.
Right, no, I'm I'm talking about, we don't have to worry about being short on pennies. Our base deposits actually, uh, within the first few days of March. So it'll actually end up being probably the first few days of April.
We'll be counting pennies then.
Yeah, we we generally in that first deposit, I guess, a lot of people make their. You know, gap payment in February, more so than the other. Um, choice which the days were.
We are getting ready, yeah, I'm ready.
Uh, so we generally, we see almost half of our property tax um revenue in that level paying. So, um. This form basically has, I mean, you trace some of these numbers back to that, um. Last sheet on the budget shows the gross. Assess valuation, uh, or net assessed valuation, that's actually um produced due to TIF. And then TIF is basically on the Colorado Springs Urban Manual Authority. So we have a slight decrease in in our gross, that number, probably some other things in there too. Um. Um. With the silver lining on that, that twenty five years from the day of starting a project, we will start seeing. A lot more revenue dollars than a few dollars that we see now.
The board twenty five years from now is gonna be a high time.
They're gonna say, oh, we're so glad for the forethought of all of those olden day board members.
Yeah, they were thinking of us.
Especially when they get the uh have to renegotiate the management.
Yeah, so yeah, extra money they get in twenty five years will help in the least and was. Due for renegotiating and managing. So that's that's about it on that, so any questions before? The question, he has the pleasure of reading through this one.
And it was amazing at how strong my glasses are, I should wear them more often. I can see, I can't see far, but I can see close. Are you ready?
Ready you're gonna be, huh?
Resolution to set mail levies, a resolution to establish and approve the certification of the Pike's Peak Library District's mail levy for the twenty twenty three. Property taxes payable in twenty twenty four. And allocating revenues from such property taxes and specific ownership tax. Among the district's various funds, you're gonna tell me some numbers, probably. Whereas the El Paso County County Assessor has certified the value of all real property in the Pike's Peak Library District. For the year of twenty twenty three for taxes to be collected in the year of twenty twenty four. And the total net assessed valuation amount of eleven trillion, six hundred ninety nine, five ninety one, three seventy. And whereas the Board of Trustees. Of the district desires to establish the amount of property tax revenues to be collected from levies against the valuation. Of all taxable properties located in the district. And whereas the Board of Trustees of the district in compliance with Tabor. Establishes the amount of property tax that revenues to be collected. That will not exceed the maximum amount of property tax revenues the district is allowed to receive under the Tabor amendment. And whereas the district is authorized to recover revenues lost through abatements. Set amounts to the district being point oh. Oh, point oh one four mils and the amount of a hundred and fifty eight, five ninety seven thousand. Whereas the Board of Trustees has expression to allocate the levy. Of three point oh four seven mils plus point oh one four mils from the abatements. For the total of three point oh six one mils. Among the various funds at the district, which the funds for the year of twenty twenty four. Are the general fund, capital fund, and the self insurance fund. As follows, in general fund, two point five eight six. Capital Fund, zero point two three four. Self Insurance Fund, zero point two two seven, for a total of three point oh four seven. Whereas in addition to revenues collected from the levy upon such taxable property. In the amount of thirty million, one hundred thirty eight, five seventy. The Board of Trustees desires to allocate to the general fund those revenues anticipated to be collected. From the specific ownership tax. Which revenues for the year of twenty twenty four are antas- anticipated in the amount of. Uh, three point five million and whereas the Board of Trustees of the Library District. Has adopted the annual budget in accordance with the local government budget law on January ninth, twenty twenty four. And now therefore it be resolved by the Pike's Peak Library District Board of Trustees. Section one, that for the purpose of meeting general operating expenses. And to help defray the cost of government for the Pike's Peak Library District for the year of twenty twenty four. There is hereby levied a tax of three point oh six one mils. Comprised of a general operating mill levy of three point oh four seven mils. And an abatement mill of oh point oh one four. Upon each dollar of the total valuation for the assessment of all taxable property. Within the district for the twenty twenty three assessment year. Section two. That the Chief Officer of the Pike's Peak Library District is hereby authorized and directed to immediately certify the county. Certified to the county of commissioners of El Paso County, Colorado, the mill levies for the Pike's Peak Library District. And thereafter determined and set, adopted this day. Um, this ninth day of January twenty twenty four.
Thank you. Second. All in favor? Any opposed? It'll be done. I'd also like to confirm that we have confirmation from county commissioners, so it's completely. First, I checked on that before we were. Alright, uh, is there any additional business that we need to tend to this evening? Right. Uh. I need a motion that when this meeting adjourns, adjourn to meet at five P M on January twenty sixth. We will not meet. Right, all in favor? Any opposed? Right, this meeting is.